This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, Patrick.
Hey, guys.
Hello.
You'll have to remember at your places to turn your mics on when you're talking.
All right, I got seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Start with roll call, please.
Lane.
Here.
Daniels.
Here.
Otto Michael.
Here.
Ritter.
Here.
Murdock.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all council members are present.
Okay. I would invite you all to please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Okay, our first item tonight is our consent agenda. Tonight, we're gonna, on the consent agenda, we have approval of the minutes from our council meeting of July 15th, and approval of pay ordinance number 907. Any discussion of any of the consent agenda items or motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Otto Michael.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Okay. Our next item is called a public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to this list that's not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that just under called a public may or may not be acted on by the council during this meeting. Does anyone wish to address the council under called a public? Okay, please step up to the mic and state your name and address.
I'm Martha Johnson, 8505 Fury Street, DeSoto, Kansas. And I'm the manager at Casey's Sunhouse Store here in Tionne.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if you're all the ones I need to be talking to or not. I wanted to come by and I wanted to say thank you to whoever hired the crew that is doing the roundabout. They have been outstanding. Sam and his crew have just been outstanding to my business. They've made sure that my driveway's been open for business. They have communicated with me every day, every step of everything that's going on. And I know you guys have heard a lot of negative about it and had a lot of flack, but I wanted to come by and I just wanted to take the time to say thank you and thank you for them.
Well, thank you, we appreciate your, the positive feedback is always a nice.
We never hear that.
Yeah.
Thanks so much for that.
Thank you.
Mike, any, anyone?
Yeah, Sam is the project foreman out there for Lionel Weaver.
Okay.
So he's worked pretty very closely with Walter on a day-to-day basis, especially with this temporary traffic control stuff.
He's been wonderful.
It's been a challenge, yeah. So, yeah, we've been very happy. Wished it would have been two weeks further on the schedule. We're cutting it kind of close here with school starting on Wednesday. But we've been in close coordination about that date and about having all lanes of traffic open and the medians there so that we don't have a big mess of a traffic control thing for the first day of school. It looks like they're planning on the asphalt surface lift tomorrow, which will make everything nice and smooth, and then by Monday have the dividing islands on each quadrant have those in place. So all the lanes, and so we won't have a forest of traffic cones out there on by Wednesday.
Okay.
Happy about that.
All right. Anyone else under called a public? Anyone on the online link? Nope, I don't see anybody.
We have Loya Barry's on, but I think she's probably here for the DeSoto.
That's what I was guessing, yeah. I shouldn't have assumed, though.
Shouldn't. She's not speaking up.
Okay. We'll move on then. Old business, we have none, so we'll go to item 4A, Consider Engineering Services Agreement for Ottawa Street Reconstruction Project.
Yes, council, this is our big capital improvement project to be constructed next year. So as we typically do, we hire the engineering firm, you know, the prior year, allocate funding in the CIP for that purpose. We actually did a, as we typically do with the larger projects, qualifications-based selection process. That included staff and some council members. Selected CFS, we brought that recommendation to you in May. And since then, we've been negotiating. It hasn't been a full-time, full-on negotiation, but it's taken a couple of months to get a scope and fee proposal put together. The total fee, the contract will be a lump sum, not a lump sum, an hourly not-to-exceed structure. And their fee estimate, estimated cost total $249,541. That's a bit higher than what we expected. I think in the original version of the CIP, we had around $250,000, but the last time we updated it, we knocked that down to $200,000. I can tell you that this project is a little more complicated than most because of some coordination issues with the railroad and also because it's going to be let and administered by KDOT because we're getting KDOT a local project for this. These plans will have to be vetted, approved, and administered by KDOT in their bidding process. So that adds to the consulting, engineering consultants workload when they do that. So we've had some back and forth about scope elements and assignment of tasks and things like that. So the number we settled on is just under $250,000. I'm comfortable that it represents the effort that's going to be required to get a successful project out to bid. The schedule that they had in their qualifications proposal had them complete by September, I'm sorry, had the project bidding early next year, but we're four months behind where we thought we would start. We thought we'd be starting the contract in May, well, four months behind that. So extend that out. Still allows for a spring letting and then summer construction next year. So their cost proposal is attached as Exhibit A to the staff report, and Exhibit B has shown our typical boilerplate engineering contract. This is the one we've used on all the bigger, the bigger engineering projects we've had lately. We'll need to revise this, and I did a little bit, but Patrick hasn't had a chance to review it, but it'll be tailored toward the current design project. So what I'm asking for is approval of the scope and fee with CFS in an amount not to $249,541 contingent on Patrick's review of the final contract.
Okay. Questions for Mike? Seeing none, anyone would like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into an engineering agreement with CFS Engineering for the Ottawa Street project in an amount not to $249,541 contingent on the city attorney's language and inclusion of a schedule that will allow the project to be let for bids no later than May of 2022.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Otto Michael.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Item B, Consider Temporary Use Permit for DeSoto Days.
Yes, council, Brad generated the staff report for this. He's been out of the office. He's available online for any questions, but he doesn't have the packet in front of him. So I promised him that I would do the initial introduction of the item and listen for any questions you might have, so. True to my promise, I'm gonna go ahead and do that. So the DeSoto Days Festival, we're glad to see is back after a year hiatus last year. General format of the event will be the uptown like we did. So you'll see, it'll be much the same as that. There's actually a, the temporary use permit that requires blocking off of some streets downtown. There is a noise permit and a parade permit. I think you're feeding back a little bit on your. Is that you, that Brad?
Is that, is that any better?
Yeah, I think, I think that's better, yeah. Yeah, we're good. Okay, so three permits totally involved here. The event will be Labor Day weekend, like always, that's September 2nd through the 4th. The carnival's gonna have to start setting up on that Monday or Tuesday, so August 30th through September 2nd, the carnival will have to set up. So that'll, that'll require blocking the streets downtown, some of the streets for that part, so they can get set up. I'm gonna pull up the map here just so everybody's kind of familiar. On this map, north is to the right, and I'm gonna have to scale it down a little bit so it can get all on the page here, generally. So like we said here on this map, 83rd Street runs top to bottom, and then here's Wia and Shawnee. So the main carnival rides will be, you know, between Wia and Shawnee, some of them up Wia Street, fire station. The vendor booths will largely line Shawnee Street, coming down towards City Hall because the car show's gonna take place at City Hall like it did in 2019. And so having the vendor booths there will really kind of help tie those two locations together. So we're pretty pleased with that. They're gonna need the new power pedestal that we installed for this purpose at the corner of Shawnee and 83rd Street. The carnival will bring their own power like they always do, and they may need to supplement some power for the vendors down Shawnee Street. Most of the food vendors will be right near the intersection of 83rd. So what we're asking for recommending approval of is the parade permit, which will happen on that Saturday, the temporary use permit, which will be the whole week, and then the noise permit, which will also follow the whole week. And we do have some representatives in the audience, and like I said, Loya's online probably listening into this, this issue as well. If you're so inclined to take that recommendation, please include all three of those permits in your motion, and the mayor votes on this item.
Okay. Questions from council? Would you guys like to say anything about this, or did Mike cover it? All right, Mike, Mike covered it. He generally covers things in pretty good detail. So if we have any questions, we can ask those, or if someone's ready to make a motion, take that step.
I will make a motion to approve the temporary use permit along with the parade permit and the noise permit as included and described in the staff report.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Otto Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both for leading our DeSoto Days effort. We appreciate hard work.
Thank you very much.
For that.
Thank you for your support. That really helps.
All right. Item C, Consider Temporary Use Permit for Cookin' on the Call.
Yes, council, another event that's returning after absence last year, October 8th and 9th, so the 8th is a Friday and the 9th is a Saturday, Cookin' on the Call event. I think from as near as I can tell, I am not as familiar with that event, but I think this is the same setup that they've had in years.
It's, yeah.
So there's not a noise permit, there's not gonna be any live bands there or PAs, so don't think there's a need for the noise permit. But just the temporary use permit for that barbecue contest, obviously sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, promotes tourism and helps fund the chamber, recommending approval of that temporary use permit for that event, and again, the mayor votes.
Okay, any questions on the Cookin' on the Call temporary use permit? Would some?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the temporary use permit for Cookin'.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing unrolled call, please.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Otto Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item D, Consider Bids for Repair to the Water Department Distribution.
Yes, council, unfortunately, we're in need of a significant repair to this building. It's only a few years old. The stone wainscote on the front, it was a faux stone, you know, the stuff that you just adhere to a wall, it actually fell off of the building earlier this spring, and a couple of storm events kind of did it in. It was attached to some backing, and the backing actually came loose from the structural members of the building. After looking at what occurred, it's not so much water intrusion, but some of that, but it didn't look like that backing was properly secured to the structure of the, like the steel structure of the building. And so some of the repairs that are gonna have to be done include addition of some structural members to adequately secure the new fascia. We went out for bids on this, we only got two of them. The low bid was $8,740 from Trifecta. Did contact the insurance company on this, our deductible is $5,000, and they were a little reluctant to commit to funding even the rest of that, and indicated our insurance rates might reflect it going forward. So in the end, don't know that it's worth a claim on. We'll certainly run it through that process, but in the end, we might not find any value to do it, to making a claim. So we'll analyze that as we go forward. Regardless, the work does need to be bid, and we have two bids, so we're recommending that we proceed with the bid from Trifecta Concrete Solutions.
Okay. Any questions for Mike on this?
Yeah, Mike, are we like past any time frame to go back on the person who built the building?
Unfortunately, yeah. Otherwise, this would be.
We would have.
Would be a claim, yeah, a warranty item instead of a, without doubt.
Was there any no reason why one's almost half the cost of the other?
Not really. You know, when you only get two bids and contractors are real busy on a small project like that, we couldn't, I couldn't. I don't know, Brad, is that something that any conversations you had, anything to add there?
Well, all I can add is both contractors did come out to the site and got the same instructions. So as you said, Mike, workload and ability to get to the job, things like that certainly factor into their price. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, Kevin, if I can ask a question. So in terms of the way they're putting it back together, did you get any external advice or are you taking the recommendations of each of the two bidders relative to their method for, for the repair or reconstruction?
I guess to answer that, Kevin, we did not, I did not solicit any information or advice from the architect originally drew up the plans, and it did just, I did solely lean on the contractors' recommendations. Of course, I did talk with Mike and then also Marshall, and then Terry works out at the water plant, also has a significant background in construction. In fact, he was the foreman on the repairs that were done out of the water plant prior to working to the city of DeSoto.
Okay, and then a follow-up to that then is on the material that they're, that they're putting back. The crookum was specific in the material that they would, that they included in their bid, and I believe, I mean, you look back at Trifecta, just says install stone. Do we know what the product is and how is it, is it comparable to what was there? Is it better than what was there? Does it need to be any different?
Well, it'll be comparable to what was there, and really what happened was the OSB or the plywood that was backing wasn't adhered, didn't have enough supports underneath to attach to the building itself, and as water and just weather events got to it, it peeled off. So no, I guess to answer your question, Crookum's bid is more specific than Trifecta's. However, I do feel that Trifecta has a pretty good understanding, and we did go out and meet with them and walk them through the project and the things that we needed to have completed.
All right, I just wanted to be sure that, you know, we're doing a good resolution going back, and, you know, I'm sure, it doesn't surprise me at all that one contractor's price could be double another's right now, just given the market conditions, but, you know, just looking at the specificity in the proposals that they gave, I was curious how they were, what they were bidding on, if you will, if they were bidding on the same thing, and if we're getting a good, solid solution going, going back.
Right. Well, I certainly can follow up with Trifecta and ask them for some more specifics if that would make mayor and council more comfortable on this selection.
Well, I think we'll probably, I mean, I presume we'll act on it regardless. I just hope that you, you know, follow through and make sure that, that it, that we don't have another problem.
Absolutely.
I just had one question. Did the original architect have any specs on, on how it should have been adhered, or was this the same contractor that maybe installed the siding upside down?
It unfortunately was the same contractor that got the low bid after, we went out and bid it ourselves initially. If you remember, we bid it as a design build, and the pricing came in around, I think it was just below, the low bid was just below a half million. And well, we bid it as a design bid build, contractor and price was a little below $300,000. Anyway, to answer your question, this was all installed by the contractor, prime contractor, Eric Mio. And we've had certainly some issues. Most of them we've been able to resolve ourselves, but this certainly was more than just something that city staff could take care of.
Understood. Thank you.
And one more, I guess, just to follow up, you're sure it's not a water intrusion issue from elsewhere in the building? That was, I take it, something must have saturated it and the weight caused it to separate, something to that effect, but you're sure there's not a weather stripping or flashing or some other issue somewhere else that's contributing, that contributed to the failure?
Well, not that I'm aware of. I did see, I mean, the flashing and all those are in place, so I don't believe there's any, any way that the water could have got back behind there. I really think it was just a poor installation and just the OSB panels, there weren't enough supports underneath or behind them that they could adhere to. And then the weight of the stone, as it got wet or as it weathered, it just sort of peeled off.
Could be just time and gravity, too. If it wasn't properly supported, I mean, whether it's wet or not, I mean, if something, if there, just that load on that OSB, if the supports were too far apart, it would start to sag or bow between the stud, the metal studs, and then, and then pop off, and certainly wouldn't be helped by rainfall, but I can believe that if, if the OSB didn't have enough support, then it's gonna wiggle, move, and flex, and then that's gonna let the adhesive that's holding the faux stone onto the OSB come, come, separate and cause the whole system to fail.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Trifecta Concrete Solutions in an amount not to exceed $8,740 for repair of the exterior stone wainscote at the water distribution building.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Murdock.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Otto Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Our next item is to discuss the 2022 draft.
Yes, council, so I was finally able to compile the complete document, which was put in the electronic packet. I did not make hard copies. If you want a hard copy of the draft version, we can certainly make one for you. Hasn't been really any material changes to the numbers or the policies or the philosophies or, you know, any impact on mill levy or utility rates since we discussed this, really the last time we discussed this was in, was in May. Really, there's been no material changes since then. There have been, a couple of things occur that I did incorporate in the document we haven't discussed. One of those being the capital improvements bond issue that we just issued here last month. Remember, we, we took out $2.1 million in new debt to finance capital improvement projects, and then an additional amount, a total of $7 million, so an additional five or so, to refund existing debt. So those debt repayment schedules have been revised and reflected in this document here. Mostly that occurs on the, on the debt service fund in terms of our payments for next year and the projections for thereafter in that debt service fund. The other thing that I've incorporated into the budget a little more thoroughly is the COVID Relief Act money. We got $400,000 in, well, 400 and some change in, in July, and we'll get the same amount next July. So I've shown that as revenues in the general fund, and then I've also included a transfer in the 2022 budget, a transfer from the general fund to the capital improvements fund of $850,000. That's not all of that money, so some of that money is gonna stay in the general fund, but, but that's with the anticipation that those funds are gonna be programmed as part of the capital improvements plan overhaul this fall. So we'll incorporate that revenue stream and incorporate whatever new projects, whatever comes out of that process will be within the CIP, so that those funds will roll over and we'll look at that each year, every year. So aside from those two changes, really, the draft document that you have now was a filling in of the narratives and some of the charts and figures that we incorporate throughout the document to explain the policy ramifications of the budgeting process and exactly where we landed on mill rates and utility rates. So I had not planned a larger discussion other than just that this evening. If you have any questions or would like to, like to give any input on the budget moving forward, we'd certainly do that. We don't have a public hearing scheduled until, what is it, Brandon?
September 2nd.
Yeah, September 2nd is the public hearing. And remember, with the new property tax, the neutral rate will be holding a public hearing on that issue in particular, that we're gonna be exceeding our revenue neutral rate and just the general one that we always do on the budget. So, and, and just for reference, we don't know yet of any municipality that is not exceeding the revenue. There might, there might be one.
I noticed the fire district as well. No published notice of their hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to add is this chart up here that, that projects the year ending fund balances for the general fund. We anticipate a big spike this year because of the COVID relief funds that we, we can't transfer out of the general fund because we don't have those transfers budgeted. So they're gonna stay in the general fund until the start of twenty twenty two, and then we can transfer. So this chart looks a little weird with that great big spike here projected for twenty twenty two. Then, as is the policy, we're normalizing those year end fund balances forward our policy of thirty percent. So I'll answer any questions you might have.
Did you, does this show what the projected impact is on our debt service fund as a result of our?
Yeah, the debt profiles. I haven't gotten those debt profiles yet from Columbia Capital. I've asked them to, to get me those. And I don't know if we want.
That's our wingway till we get the.
But yeah, so.
I was just curious if we had that.
Don't have it yet. Don't have it yet, but I don't know how quickly this will come up. But you, you, we've seen that debt profile and how it, how it diminishes over time. Don't have those. For now, I've got the placeholders in there.
Okay.
From the, from the, the ones that they gave us at the beginning of the, that will get incorporated. I wish I could find them quickly. Sorry.
Any questions for Mike? Any points of discussion anyone has?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Good. Thank you.
Moving on, we do not have any executive sessions, so advisory reports. Mike, carry on anything for?
Um, yeah, no, the only thing I was gonna just update you on was around about construction schedule, which we did a little bit earlier. So they're, they're working hard to make sure that everything is as buttoned up as it could possibly be before school starts on Wednesday. Still working toward that. Okay?
And that's it for your report?
Sir.
A city attorney, Patrick, anything for the group tonight?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay. Brad, city planner, anything? You're muted.
Sorry, I had the mute on. No, nothing tonight, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Brandon, anything from the city clerk?
Two quick things. If you notice, when you walk out the city hall today, our art piece is up. We installed that yesterday afternoon. So that was, we laid the new pad and put the art piece up, and we're working on getting a plaque with the artist's name and maybe a brief description of what the piece of art is supposed to represent. So we're working on that. Then the only other thing I have is this afternoon, you received an email from me about some revised retreat days. The date we selected on the, the second was not working for everyone. So I kicked out three more days. If you guys could get that back to me by maybe mid next week, that'd be great.
Okay. Council comments. I'm gonna start with you, Danny.
Nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Rob?
Nothing tonight.
Lori?
Yep, I'm good.
Kevin, Hannah Michael?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Kevin Ritter?
I only have one comment. I will be on vacation for the second meeting of September, so I will be absent.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything either, so.
I'd like to make my adjourn. Second.
Yeah?
Hi.
Hi. I suppose. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
All right, tonight.
Thank you all.